The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda with the addition of, under number four, executive reports, G commemorative recognition and H investing in Canada infrastructure? Constable Sernick, thank you. Have we got a second or? Constable Frank, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, could we have a motion, please, for the minutes of the council meeting held on October 24th of '22? Constable Vroba, seconded by Constable Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have GFL Cart Report for October '22. Could we have a motion of acceptance for that, please? Constable Sernick, thank you. Seconded by Constable Ford, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the GFL Cart Repair Report for October of '22. Could we have a motion for that? Constable Clark, thank you. Seconded by Constable Frank. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan Bruins' request for relief of November 11th, 2022 affinity rental. Constable Sernick, did you want to speak to that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Again, this is just something that came about the last Bruin meeting, but there's some validity to it. That's why I bring it to council. The Bruins are aware that this falls outside the current agreement that we have between the Bruins and the city, but they only ask because of the challenging affinity schedule for this year. They missed a gate for the concert and obviously a few more events throughout the year here. So, and again, that's just kind of something that it was booked on this day just because of the challenging schedule. So, they just asked for relief in this situation. I would make the motion that we grant it to them.
Okay, thank you. You'll make that motion. Have we got a second or? Okay, let's get a second or if we can. Constable Ford, thank you. Constable Clark, go ahead, Constable Ford.
Thanks, your worship. This game, they knew this game was happening, and it states very clearly in their contract, if there is a statutory holiday that they are to pay this fee. So, why was this not asked for previously before this game actually happened? Do you know?
That I don't know. Again, it just seemed more along the lines that they would not have scheduled it on this day without the challenging schedule of affinity this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Constable Vroba.
Thank you, worship. I was just curious whether any other games played that day at affinity place, because my one concern would be due to the challenging schedule we have this year, if we reimburse the Bruins, we're going to have minor hockey and any other organization that played in the rink that day coming to look for another refund as well. So, we just want to, in my opinion, tread lightly before we give anyone back money on a day that all groups know about the charge.
Okay, thank you. Constable Vroba, any other comments? Constable Clark?
Certainly, yeah. Thanks, your worship. I do think that we caused this problem, you know, and they were, they had to do some changes that they probably weren't prepared to do, except for, I think it was for the WHL game, and they worked around their schedule to do that. So, I think we did cause this problem, and I think we should pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's tied, so, no, I guess it's more than tied. It's lost. If it's tied, it's lost, but there was four against. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving forward, again, I'll get you to speak to this. Under original communications, delegations, and petitions, from Constable Sernick, the Estevan Bruins request land use of airport ag lands. Constable Sernick, please.
Yeah, again, that's just came up in the discussion. Obviously, they're always looking to do some sort of fundraising. It was pointed out when I requested, the city clerk pointed out that it's booked up for three years under a current contract. So, I guess basically for this time, we can just take that back to the Bruins, let them know that it'd be available for 2025. Again, basically, they have time to come up with a plan, because it's kind of all on them. And, you know, I just put the motion that we just table it until 2024, or the year before the contract comes up.
Okay, thank you, Constable Sernick. And what happened, the reason we were able to get those years of fundraising, we not only had the farmers come to the table with their fuel and equipment, we also had the seed supplier come and donate to seed, we had the fertilizer companies come and donate the fertilizer as well as the spraying for the weeds, they got that donated as well. And after three years, they said, you know what, it's a lot of money, we just feel at this juncture that we're probably done doing that, donating all of this. And although it was great, they did that. After those few years, that was kind of the end of it. Now, having said that, you make a fair point, in two, three years' time, would we be able to get some of those companies back together again? Perhaps?
Yeah, and it's something that we could, you know, leave in the Bruins' hands if they can go out and collect all that.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's available for that purpose, I guess.
Absolutely. Good point, Constable Sernick. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to written reports of committees. We have the Estevan Public Library Minutes of October 18th. Could we have a motion, please, for those? Constable Vroba, thank you. Seconded by Constable Wallezer. Any questions or comments? Constable Vroba.
I was just going to mention that they just finished having a very successful book sale, and also on October 29th, I attended the regional library meeting, and that was very interesting, too, with everything that's coming down the pipe with the library, but also with the fact that right now, we are entering into recession, dollars are tight in people's households. I urge people to check out the library, because it is, they offer magazine subscriptions, newspapers, you can rent ebooks, you can do digital books. It is actually unbelievable, the programming is offered completely free. They're also setting up new computer stations, updated, so that people can access that. And so, yeah, the resources at the library are amazing, and people should check that out. It'll save your household a lot of money and get you out into community with other people, so.
Thank you, Constable Vroba. And yeah, it's a great service that they do provide, and perhaps more people could look at that and take advantage of that. Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Tax Assessor, tax enforcement permission to proceed for title. And we do this every year. City manager, anything you have to say on this?
Nothing, no, your worship. Just, it's a similar report as to last year, and I do see that the comparatives aren't there, so I can't provide those to council, because I know that comes up every year, so, comparative total numbers. There is a block there, and we can't link financial to specific areas, but if you go on ISIP, you can see where those, all those properties are. So, that's all I can say to them.
Okay, thank you for that, city manager. What's the wish of council on this? Constable Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make the recommendation. Will you proceed?
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second or? Constable Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Tax Assessor, again, West Valley Village Limited, request for tax abatement. City manager, did you want to touch on this, please?
Yeah, so I can speak to this one. Obviously, when they're requesting tax information, we're allowed to discuss this in open. So, this is at the West Valley Village. This has been an area that has been dealing with trying to sell those units and transfer title for a couple of years now. As the letter from the lawyers indicate, it looks like there may be some interest in one of the units, and to help move those, they're asking for a tax abatement of some of the arrears amounts. I believe Trina has provided all the current tax information on a yearly basis and what we get from them. So, I guess it's up to council whether they want to provide that, to get that moving, or not.
Thank you, city manager. Yeah, the credit union is requesting the city of Estevan to reduce the amount owing by $50,000, with the intention, I guess, that then perhaps they might not move the building, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And that's a pretty big building. I don't know what a building like that would cost to move. I'm guessing considerable. But anyway, we'll open the floor. Constable Frank?
Thanks, your worship. And I guess I'm kind of defaulting to our pretty standard. We just don't, we can't really do this. Well, the bank owns the property, they still continue to accrue property tax, correct? So, yeah, I can't, perhaps I'm wrong, but I can't remember, can't think of a time or a reason that we would ever kind of sway from that pretty strict precedence of we don't give tax abatements. So, that would probably be my recommendation, unless there's other information.
Okay, you'll make that motion, Constable Frank? Okay, thank you. Have we got a second or? Constable Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I actually agree with Constable Frank. I would make second the motion, if not have made the motion, just for the fact that I think that if we abate these taxes, a lot more people, it would be lining up to get their taxes abated, too.
Okay, good point. Any other questions or comments from members of council? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Carried. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Land Development Officer, the Service Road Civic Address on Dryden Road. So, Richard, thank you for coming tonight. Did you want to give a preamble on this?
Sure. Thank you, your worship, and councillors, good evening. What happened is after we did the civic address updates to Bowie subdivision, there was a request that came in from another individual. The properties to the east of the Service Road on Suris are extending north from Drater and Wellack up to the north boundary of the city. Some of those addresses are regarded as Suris North, the other ones are Highway 47 North. Delivery people can't find it and what have you. So, they asked if council would consider issuing proper civic addresses to those properties. One of the requirements for that would be, as per council procedure, to name that Service Road. I do believe that council has come up with a name that would be fitting for the property. And so, if council goes with this recommendation, I will then fire this off to the powers that be with the province, so that 911 and Google and everyone else will be able to find those addresses.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Yes, I believe this would be more important for the ambulance as well.
Yep.
And, yeah, city council did have time to discuss this, and they thought Mr. Dryden, who used to be a police chief in our community many years ago, would be appropriate, and his name was on the list. Constable Vroba?
Thank you, worship. That's what I was just going to say, is in the future, when we have these types of name changes come to council, I think it would have been appropriate and proper for the reason why Dryden was picked. If we could have just had some sort of small write-up attached to this, to basically explain why Mr. Dryden's name was put forward on the list. His name has been on the list for quite some time, and that, yes, as a council, we did choose his name, but it just would have been nice for the public to be able to go on our package, read about it, and know about it ahead of the time, so.
Yeah, perhaps, Constable Vroba, if you like, down the road, we can put that little addendum in there explaining it, if you like.
Yeah, that would be excellent. And I will make the motion that we proceed with name change.
Okay, thank you. Constable Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I'll second that, and maybe we could get Jaclyn to just put out a release saying, hey, we've got a new street in Estevan, it's named after a police chief from 1905, and this is why we chose it.
Excellent. Good idea. Okay, both good comments. Thank you for that. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, from the Fire Chief, we have the Fire Reports for September. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Thank you, Constable Wallezer. Seconded by Constable Sernick. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, we have from the Water Services Manager, the Water Quality Report for October. Everything's going fine. Our aluminum is a little high, but we're testing every month for that to make sure we stay within the guidelines. And our manager, city manager, is looking after that on how we can rectify that, correct?
Correct, your worship. And we actually just got a letter today. It's not in this package, but it'll be in the next quality report, that the province does commend the efforts that we're taking to keep it in that level, and that we'll just up the testing to make sure it's all within appropriate levels, and that letter will be attached at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for that. What's the wish of council? Could we have a motion to accept this report, please? Thank you. Constable Clark, seconded by. Constable Ford, any further questions? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, from our building official, the building permits for October. Could we have a motion to accept those, please? Thank you, Constable Sernick. Seconded by. Constable Frank, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, we have commemorative recognition. So, this is a policy, I guess, city manager, we're kind of expanding it a bit. We've already got, you know, the garbage cans and what have you along the walk path. This is the garbage cans and recycle within affinity place, correct?
Yes, thank you, worship. So, we were approached by members of the UMWA to ensure that the garbage cans around affinity place walking track also had recycling in them. We thought that was a good idea, so we started pricing those out. And through that process, it was identified that, you know, they would like to wrap them and commemorate the UMWA members. So, that was just a recent change in the last couple, that's why, last couple of days, that's why it was tabled for tonight. But I think it falls in line with kind of the procedures that we have in place, the commemorative recognition program, and they do look pretty good. It'd be nice to see recycling around the track as well.
Okay, thank you for that, city manager. Any questions or comments? Constable Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Just the one comment that was kind of headed in some of the brainstorming around this would just be around the lifespan of that, and to identify that what we would do, my thought and my suggestion would be that we would allow them to have it wrapped for the lifetime of that garbage can, so that if that garbage can needs to be replaced, we could give them maybe first right of refusal to purchase a new one, or to have it rewrapped. But if they choose not to, that then we have the ability to resell that, just so that it's not a forever endeavor, and we're down the road paying for garbage cans that they don't, or that, you know, in 50 years from now, or 20 years from now, whatever that may be.
Okay.
But that it's for the lifespan of that. But otherwise, yeah, otherwise, I very much appreciate UMWA's willingness to continue to support our community. They do good work there.
Okay, thank you very much. And yes, I agree. So, are you making the motion then with that caveat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good point. Seconded by Constable Ford. Any other questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And next, H, another addition to executive reports, investing in Canada infrastructure. We've talked for a number of years about the separation of sanitary from the storm sewer in Westview. And with this available federal grant, here's an opportunity for us to do that. City manager, did you want to add to that?
Thank you, worship. So, this, they came out with another green stream, which includes water servicing under the ISIP program. This is a full-scale separation of sanitary and storm systems in the Westview area, which will include a street replacement as well. We have applied for this about four or five times. We feel that it fits into the criteria of this grant. So, as I know, it is an expensive endeavor, but if we can get 75% covered for that, the city cost, instead of being around 18 to 20 million, is about 5 million. So, I know I've been asked a couple of times, well, from the financial perspective, what does that look like? I think if that funding was awarded in about that 15, 16 million, that we would then look at a Boerwing bylaw to complete that works.
Okay, thank you, city manager. As you say, it doesn't come up that often, and the opportunity for us to get that much funding would be hard to pass up, especially rectifying that serious problem. Constable Ford, then Constable Vroba?
Thanks, your worship. And just to note, in Shane's water report from a couple pages ago, the annual water security report did come out, and they did get inspected, and that was flagged that our sewer lines are crossed. So, we are on people's radar that that does need to be replaced.
Good point. Thank you. Constable Vroba?
Thank you, worship. And yes, I've been on council since 2016. This is a project that we've talked about since that time, probably before my time. I think it's exciting if we can apply for it and actually get it approved. Again, that we may or may not. The one thing I do have a question about is the contributions. A federal contribution, at least 40%, and provincial contributions, up to 33.33. So, if we were to apply for this funding, and they backed down and said, you know what, we're not going to apply, we're not going to give you any, and the city was on the hook for 60%, then at that point, do we have the option of saying, no, we're not in it, because we have to come up with 60% of it, if the province backed out?
Thank you, Constable Vroba. I know they generally work in tri-party agreements, so I've never seen it where the province would not fund it and the feds would. But at that point, again, that would come back to council, and we could decide at that point whether it was something the city wanted to move forward.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, usually, they both agree.
Yeah. Based on this application, I agree with what Constable Ford said, and I, Constable Ford, did you make that motion to proceed?
Thank you.
I will second. No, I'll second her motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Constable Clark.
Thanks, your worship. I do live in this area, and I constantly see the underground work that gets done in that area. It's a continual replacement and fix in that area. So, I do believe this would solve all those long-term problems and put us on a good footing in a large area of this town. So, I would be in support of this as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Constable Frank?
Thanks, your worship. And just further to, as mentioned earlier, this would also include some repaving, obviously repaving of roads, as that would all have to be redug, which is a great asset for us. Would this include sidewalk replacement as well, city?
Thank you, Constable Frank. I guess we'd have to see at the scope and see if the services need to be replaced in certain those areas, and what condition the sidewalks are. I can get a little more information on what areas are identified. If the sewer water main or need to be brought up with the sidewalks, it would likely include that. If there was areas that just had connections, they likely aren't including that, but I will follow up with that and get some more information.
Sure thing. And I guess as we progress, I mean, we don't, we don't have the money yet, so we'll wait until that comes through. If this does progress, that might be something we might want to add, look into while we're there, do a little bit more of that work as well. But we'll wait until we see if we actually get any money first.
Absolutely. Thank you, Constable Frank. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, we have introduction of bylaws. First of all, we have bylaw 2022-2063, Fee for Service, and this will be first reading this evening. Whereas pursuant to Section 8.1.1 of the city's act, the city may set service charges for services provided, and may set the time and place and the manner in which they will be payable. And whereas the council of the city of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to do so, now therefore, the council of the city of Estevan hereby enacts as follows. Number one, that the following service charges shall be identified in Schedule A. Number two, the fees indicated in of this bylaw shall be payable at the time of request. And number three, the former bylaw repealed, that bylaw 2021-2045 of the city of Estevan Saskatchewan, and all amendments thereto are hereby repealed. Such repeals should not traditionally affect any matter or thing whatever done, existing or pending, at the time of such repeal. Effective date, the bylaw shall come into force upon, and effect upon final passing. So, this will be read this evening. If we could have the motion for first reading, then we'll give our community the time to look over it, ask any questions. After that, we'll give it second and third reading. So, for bylaw 2022-2063, could we have a motion, please, for first reading this evening? Constable Sernick, thank you. Seconded by Constable Wallezer. Can't ask any questions. We do that after second.
Just a second, there's been a word in there that's wrong.
Oh, okay. And what would that be?
It says that where time is in access of an hour. I'm not sure if it should be excess.
Excess? I think that's a good point.
Is it access of an hour? Oh, well, under the $30 an hour.
Yeah, it's accessing, it's accessing records.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And good you caught it, Constable Clark. I can tell you're reading your package. Even if it was wrong, you still read it. We're going to give you kudos for that. That was a good thing.
I'm a star.
You do get a star for that. Okay. Did we get that passed? Ready? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw 2022-2064, Traffic Bylaw Amending Trailers and E-Scooters. We have to move with the times, and that includes e-scooters. So, could we have a motion, please, for Traffic Bylaw 22, 2022-2064, Amending Trailers and E-Scooters, first reading? Thank you. Constable Wallezer?
Your worship, I do have two requests to update at the same time that we're reviewing this bylaw. Is this the appropriate time to make them?
Well, I guess we can. Usually, we don't ask questions till after second reading, but I mean, if you have something that we missed, please bring it up. I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we, you made that motion for first, right?
I would, yes.
Do we have a motion for second, for second reading? First, yeah. Do we have a second or?
Second.
Okay, Constable Vroba, go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you, worship, for clarity. I would like to see September 30th added to the list of national holidays that this traffic bylaw applies to. And I would also, for clarity, like to see that Pigot Drive is now referenced as Wellack Road in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Constable Wallezer. Again, I have to give you a star for picking that out. Now, we've got two star pupils. That's great. Any other questions or comments? Constable Frank?
Thanks, your worship. And this might be over to Richard. Just in refer, in reference to e-scooters, we have a few other things, and I was wondering if the wording needed to be e-scooters, or if we should be referring to e-bikes as well, or some of those other different, other, there's so many new things now, I don't even, can't even keep up with them. But is that, is that something separate, or, oh, to city clerk?
To Counselor Frank. So, SGI came out with the definition of e-scooter. So, that's why it's being included into our traffic bylaw. So, they didn't actually identify what an e-scooter was, so we had to put some sort of definition and clarification to it. So, if you read what the definition is, it's kind of attached to a motor and things like that. I did put it past police services, because they would be the ones enforcing, and they were good with the interpretation of what it was. So, that's kind of where it sits.
Okay, perfect. No, so we'll just continue to follow whatever SGI determines for us then. Thank you.
Yeah, that's usually what we do, Constable Frank, so thank you for that. And yeah, now you can spend $10,000 on a bicycle. Like, who knew? Constable Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I was just going to say, like, because to me, in here, it says we're not allowing them to be on any roadway with a speed limit of 50. E-scooters will only be permitted on roads the speed of 50 kilometers per hour or less. So, basically, we're saying if you have an e-scooter, or an e-bike, or whatever, you're only allowed in our back alleys?
No, all the roads are 50.
It says, e-scooters will only permit on roads the speed of 50 kilometers per hour or less. Oh, I was thinking less than 50. Okay, I was reading that wrong. I was putting the less than 50.
Yeah.
I'm back on the same page.
Sorry, Constable Vroba, you do not get a star.
No, because I read this yesterday, I thought to myself, okay, we're sticking them right in the back alley. Because I have had a few complaints of people who are riding these bikes, and they're going quite fast with traffic. And so, this might actually help out, because one said it's kind of on the highway, going under the underpass, where somebody was riding their bike, and they get quite concerned for their safety. And so, I guess SGI is fine with that, then. If you're on an e-bike and you're on a 50-kilometer hour road, you shouldn't be on the sidewalk. You should be riding with traffic. The underpass is at 70, that's what I'm saying. This will help that, if someone has a concern with that, that's going to be good.
And enforcement.
And enforcement. And then they're not allowed in our pathways.
Great.
Right. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Constable Vroba. Any other questions? Okay, Constable Clark?
So, you've now said that e-bikes aren't going to be allowed on, on the pathway system?
Well, I didn't comment on that, because, again, we allow bicycles, as you know, along with the walkers. They have to treat each other with respect. I think what some people were thinking, some pedestrians, that if these e-scooters are going to be going by them at 50K, that is a problem. But I would think on the walking path, they would have to keep their speed to what, 5K? have to keep their speed to what, 5K? Whatever would be assumed safe. And we can maybe run that by the traffic committee, but they would have to be safe. I mean, you couldn't go tearing by pedestrians. It simply wouldn't be safe.
Well, it's quite, it's quite possible that a regular bike can go down some of those hills and be at 60 kilometers just as easy as an e-bike.
Yeah, what, yeah. And that's a fair comment. And what it is, is treating people, the pedestrians, with respect and not running them off the pathways. So to this point, we have allowed bicycles on the pathways. I have not heard of any bikes running over pedestrians. I think, as far as I know, they've all been treated with caution, and they've allowed, the pathway has worked well for both bicyclists and pedestrians. I haven't heard to the contrary. So unless we actually have people that are being disrespectful and driving too fast, I guess council will have to maybe revisit that. And then I'm sure the bicyclists will not be happy with the results. Counselor Vroba?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to stir that one up. I actually was thinking, because on pathways, it was just without anything with a motor, technically, we had said before. But I, again, I walk those pathways, and when people on e-bikes come by me, they don't usually even have their motor on. They're not zooming by me at 50. They are quite respectful. So I think what I was more referring to is, if you can do 50 on the street, you're not going by me with a dirt bike or something. So, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to stir that up.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Under public hearings and reports, we have none this evening. Giving notice, Saskatchewan Multicultural Week, September 19th to 24th. Jaclyn's gone, city manager. Do we do anything in our community to celebrate that? We used to.
Thank you, worship. I will have to double check with her and get back to her.
Okay. And if we do find anything, we'll put that on the city website. Okay, Counselor Ford?
Your worship, just to note, our agenda says September 19th to 24th, but this motion actually, or this proclamation actually says November 19th to 27th.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Again, I have to give out a third star, Counselor Ford. Now, half of councillor, half the councillors are doing awesome. Sorry, guys. Maybe we still have time yet tonight.
My nose is in brown.
Okay, okay. Thank you for picking that out, Counselor Ford. Next, motions from committee. We have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws. You've all had the opportunity to go over, again, I'm sure not the first time, bylaw 2022-2061, the zoning bylaw. This evening, we will give second and third reading. Richard, you're here again. Thank you this evening. Anything you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just here if there's any questions.
Okay. Okay, could we have a motion, please, for second reading of bylaw 2022-2061, the zoning bylaw, second reading? Thank you, Counselor Frank. Thank you, Counselor Sernick. Now, this is second reading, so you have the right to come forward with any questions, comments that you may have. Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, I will request for third reading and adoption for use of bylaw 2022-2061, the zoning bylaw. Thank you, Counselor Wollizer, seconded by Counselor Clark. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And thank you, Richard. I know you put a lot of time and effort, probably, what, over a year into this, along with public meetings? Thank you for your efforts in this regard.
And thank you, your worship, and to the current council and the previous one. This project actually started in the spring of 2018.
2018. Well, God bless you for hanging in there.
So from here now, it goes on to the province, and hopefully, with no hiccups or anything, we should be off and running by early spring of next year.
A lesser person would have packed it in a long time ago, Richard. Thank you for your dedication.
Thanks. You lost a couple of years for COVID.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
We'll blame COVID. Thank you. Okay, next, inquiries. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I was actually just going to say, with multicultural week having basically November 19th to 27th, if we don't have anything planned this year as a city, this could be something great for next year if we started looking at it. Because I know when I was young, growing up in Thompson, we had a lot of this.
You're still young, Counselor Vroba?
Still young, 51, yes. Basically, we, as a child, we would go to these different multicultural events and learn about the different types of dance, the different types of food, the different types of things they do in their culture. And this is something that would be great maybe for next November, during this week, if we could.
Yes, I agree. And we have held these events, Counselor Vroba, and they were very successful.
Yes, I think that'd be a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to, first of all, thank, like, the United Mine Workers for stepping up and sponsoring that. It also was in Affinity Place, where a lot of the new sponsors have, their stickers and signs have been put up. And I want to thank those businesses that stepped forward to do that. And it, it gives Affinity a great new look with some of the new stuff around the seating, the new sponsorship signs. So I think it's just a time that this community has, once again, done good things for Affinity to keep it a top-notch facility. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Counselor Clark. We thank the mine workers. And I know city clerk, Jaclyn, Jeff, they've all spent a lot of time and effort on this rebranding. Thank you all very much, and it looks awesome. And we'd also like to thank all the sponsors for all of their contributions. Counselor Wollizer?
Thank you, your worship. Just a notice to the public that although the large-scale influenza clinics are not operating in the way that they have previous years, Public Health is offering out both the new bivalent Moderna vaccine for COVID, as well as the influenza flu shots. For some reason, influenza is more prevalent this year, but there's also a lower rate of uptake than there has been in previous years. So just a reminder that hospitals are under quite extreme pressure. And so if you are sick and you can stay home, that's appreciated, but also to encourage people to get out and get their annual flu shot.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Counselor Wollizer. And yeah, it's unfortunate, but our healthcare right across Canada, and I know we've talked about this before, is in crisis mode. So anything you can do to help that out until we get back to preventative mode would be appreciated. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Just a reminder now that it's actually finally snowed, and winter seems to be here permanently, about shoveling your driveway and your adjacent sidewalk. And I know there's lots of people who say, oh, the pathway should be cleared and this and that. But it's also your responsibility to make sure the sidewalk in front of your house is cleared, just so everybody has a safe place to walk and to be able to, you know, feel comfortable to walk in the community without falling down on ice or anything.
Good point. Thank you, Counselor Ford. And you, please, be careful if you're out there shoveling snow. Who have you got off council that's your neighbor? Perhaps Counselor Frank. Let him do it, because we don't want you to fall and get another concussion. Counselor Sernick?
Thank you, worship. Just referring to the tanker fire that was on Nesbit Drive there a short time ago. It was pointed out by the industry back in the Glenn Peterson Industrial Park that there is only one access in and out of the industrial park. So I just wonder, city manager, if you could just update us on the...
Thank you, Counselor Sernick. Yeah, so this concern was brought to our safety coordinator that there is no emergency access if that roadway is blocked. Luckily, we have been working with the Southeast College over the last four years to extend King Street over to that area. It's not an operational road yet, but it is fully complete all the way around. So we are looking to make sure that we have some snow removal there and have sign as it says emergency access, use only in case of emergency. So we're going to be addressing that, because the only other solution would be to building a whole nother service access road. And I'm not even sure where you'd put that or what the cost would be. So we're looking into it. We can give council an update as we get through it.
Thank you, city manager. And you know, that's just about worth a star, Counselor Sernick. That's a safety thing. That's pretty important. Counselor Frank?
Well, I'm not going to get a star. I was going to actually, I was going to say, you live closer to Counselor Ford than I do, your worship.
Okay, I guess I'll have to do it.
But I'm not going to get a star for saying that, so I better offer up my shoveling services. I have nothing else this evening, your worship.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Frank. City manager?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, city clerk?
Nothing, your worship.
We don't have our financial Trudy here this evening, so we wish her well on holidays. So with that, do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Sernick. All in favor? Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and take care out there. Good night.